Okay, welcome everyone to the Center for Works for Regional School Committee. We'll now come to order at 7:00 PM. Just a note to all that this meeting is being recorded audio and video recorded. And if anyone is recording this meeting in the audience, please close that now. Seeing none, we'll move on. All who are able, please stand to play the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with one nation, under one God, in the great soul, in the liberty and justice of our own.
If you have a super tech, please take a call.
Dr. Cratchit? Here. Ms. Di Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Farland? Mr. Gazillo?
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer?
Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Ms. Keith? Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Mrs. Ladisori?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Amherst?
Here.
We're in the open seat in Washington. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Our CBA rep is not here and our school committee student rep did responsibly notify us that he is not able to make it tonight. We have a call.
Okay, thank you. And just a note, the chair notes that we have a valid agenda in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25. And next article of order business is responses from the audience. Does anyone want to address the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay, will the number please approve the warrants?
Move to approve warrant number 2018-23 dated December 29th, 2017. Accounts payable in the amount of $726,332.17.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-25 dated January 12th, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $277,510.11.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-25 dated January 12th, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $277,510.11. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-25. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-26 dated December 28th, 2017.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR-2018-26. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-26D dated December 28th, 2017.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-26 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-28 dated January 11th, 2018. In the amount of $609,305.16.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR-2018-28. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-28D dated January 11th, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $131,023.52.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-28 Delta. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? No extension, the motion carries.
That's it.
Thank you. Next order of business is communications reported to the chair. The only communications the chair has this evening is that we still have the vacancy for our Washington seat. And we'll be running the next order of business, which is subcommittee reports and recommendations, with no objections by the committee. We have Skanska, our OPM, and DRA, our design architect, with us this evening. We'd like to move the project up on the agenda so that we can have a good time and at a good time. So, there's no objections, and we've moved that part of our agenda. And Ms. Kazna, do you have any new note?
No, just that these gentlemen have actually been here with us today since around 12:30. They were part of the MSBA kickoff meeting when MSBA had two of their representatives come out, project coordinator, project manager, and went through really some of the logistical requirements, timelines that we would need to meet. It was very reassuring, I think John and I felt the same way, to see Skanska and DRA were very comfortable with everything they were telling us. So while it might be new to us, they're very familiar with the process. And then we just had a great meeting with a very full school building committee and heard some really, really great information, the details. I think what you'll be very interested in is the timeframe going forward and what to expect in the next couple of years as we move into the project. And then we will share with you as well, we're confirming dates because things are really going to get going now, as John has told us. And we're going to be meeting as a full school building committee monthly, but subgroups will be meeting bi-weekly. So there's going to be a lot of meetings and community outreach, and I'll make sure to share that with you so you can participate when you can and just be informed of what's going on to share in the seven communities.
So just-
They've been great, that's the other thing.
Before we start, we pass this out, I ask Mr. Benjiver if he could speak to that along with DRA at some point during the presentation, just to give you an idea of what the process is. And that was largely what was covered today with MSBA, was what the whole process is beginning today, moving out through the project. That would give you a better idea for what the timing is of all the critical events. There's a lot over the next year between now and next spring before the vote would be taken by our committees. And then how long it would take for the project to possibly take to complete. So with that, the floor is yours.
We're your OPM. We've been with you for about six months now. Helped with the selection of the project and the vote. Very excited to be with you. And I'm pretty much the main point of contact. Dale is the project exec. Dale's been working on MSBA work for a long time, knows all the ins and outs. So this is our team. Dale's the project exec. And I have a couple other people who work on the beat, who aren't going to be that involved right now. The one thing I will point out is that I'm a Williamstown resident, Fitzfield guy, Pittsfield guy. So you have a Berkshire-based crew. All of us have over 30 years' experience in this business, so very talented crew. And then the overall budget, you guys approved the $850,000 for the feasibility study portion of this project. $250,000 of that was for our contract. We negotiated recently with DRA, and their contract's valued at $525,000. There's $65,000 worth of reimbursables that we haven't approved yet, but they're anticipated. They're delineated down here, wetland delineation, site survey, geotech, environmental studies, and on and so forth. Studies, if they're needed, we'll go to the building committee and seek approval to add those things. So right now, we're projecting we're going to come in slightly under budget. We've done a lot of these jobs, as DRA has. It's not like a construction project where you have a continuous stream of extras, or hopefully we don't on our project, but we're pretty sure that we're going to live within this number unless something crazy comes up on site or with design where we have to go study additional sites or something of that nature. So this is a solid number. So what I'd like to do with the schedule is Carl's going to make a very detailed presentation. As he gets to reach phase, I'd like to go and just talk about the deliverables and associated dates. I think they'll be more meaningful as Carl described them, so if you will allow me to interrupt you periodically.
That'll work fine, John, thanks. Good evening, I'm Carl Franceschi. We just wanted to sort of give you the brief version of what we gave to the building committee to bring you up to speed on where we're at. This is the agenda that we talked about with them. This was, tonight was our first introduction formally to the building committee and to yourselves. We'll touch briefly on DRA's experience with prior relevant projects and talk about what we see are the key issues moving forward and identify what the next steps are. Briefly, DRA has been doing this for a long time. We started in 1923, and for most of our 95 years, we've been focused on doing educational projects primarily in Massachusetts throughout the entire Commonwealth. So we are 35 people. About 27 of us are in Wallfane, in the Boston area. Balance, we have a small studio outside Hartford, Connecticut as well, but we cover, as we say, all of Massachusetts, Southern New England. This is our team and specialists. I act as principal in charge, sort of ultimately responsible for the project on our end. Vladimir is our day-to-day contact, the project manager. We have backup in the office, Greg Smalley, another architect, help coordinate particularly with MSBA submissions. There's a fair amount of paperwork that goes into these projects. But I want to highlight too, in our office, we have educational specialists. Paul Moore was trained as an architect, but he spends his time actually doing educational programming. John Tindall Gibson was actually trained as an educator, was a former teacher and superintendent of schools, now works for us full-time because we do so many of these school projects, it really helps us in advancing the program and working with superintendents and school committees and translating your vision into architecture. But we also bring on an outside educational consultant, Dr. Frank Locker, who'll be leading the visioning sessions that will be happening soon to lead to a specific, you know, Wacona vision of the future of education for the district. Frank has tremendous credentials, he's done not only a lot of MSBA kinds of projects, but throughout the United States and even some internationally. We've got, DRA has a tremendous amount of high school experience, this is listing just in the last 13 years of projects. We have, most of them are completed. We have a couple that are ongoing, including in Fitzfield, the new Teconic High School. So we have a couple in construction and a couple in design, but we certainly have the capacity to take on Wacona. I want to share with you a couple of relevant projects. This is in the category of addition renovation, because that may be a possibility for Wacona. We haven't made any preconceptions. But here, Needham High School is sort of historic building that was preserved, as well as the auditorium, the existing auditorium and gymnasium. The balance of the building was demolished, and ultimately we ended up, you can see the historic part, building a new secondary entrance and a new academic wing. And it was all done while the existing school stayed in operation. There was actually no swing space really needed. We were able to phase it such a way, build some new, and move students around. It took several years. No disruption, I can attest personally, because I had three sons that went to high school here while it was in construction. Another kind of addition renovation, a much smaller scale in the sense that the only new construction was basically a gymnasium and locker room for this vocational school. But that one move freed up space within the existing high school to do some other things, like turn the gymnasium into a future library right here, and turn the old library into an addition to the cafeteria. The cafeteria is on the right-hand side of what used to be a corridor. Now it's a much more open kind of student complex, which we see more and more of in high schools these days. And then the rest of the school was renovated in phases, but that one move of building a new gym opened up some possibilities to reprogram some existing space. We also wanted to reassure you that you can build new construction very close to existing schools. This is over in Springfield. The Putnam Vocational School is kind of on the left-hand side, and the white roof building is the new construction. That was done literally at the closest point, 15 feet apart there, and the existing school continued in operation during the entire time that the new building was being constructed. What they lost essentially was a football field and some parking area, but otherwise the school was kind of uninterrupted. And then obviously, once the school is completed, you can move in there and then demolition can happen, and the finished site work can happen. Here's what that Putnam looks like today. It's a two-story building, sort of progressive design you might say for a vocational school, but that's the way schools are going these days. And here's kind of interior main street space in that school, which gives access to a lot of the common areas and community functions in the school. Another project, this one in elementary school, very tight on two sides to an existing school, but once again was able to be constructed while the existing school remained in operation. Then eventually that went away, became the drop-off circle in the playfields for the adjacent school. And then this is Teconic in Fitzfield, so in the foreground is the new school, the L-shaped building, literally just across the driveway from the existing building. They lost, you know, a soccer field and a softball field during construction, but otherwise, the, you know, the parking areas, the bus drop-off, the school itself uninterrupted during the construction period. And they're about six months away from finishing the building itself, they'll be able to move into that, and then the demolition of the existing school can happen starting this summer. Here's a rendering of Teconic, of what it will look like. This is a relatively recent construction photo. They're closing it in and finishing up now on the inside there. We did highlight to the building committee too, one of the things that are happening in schools nowadays is how the classrooms are organized. We see more and more clustering of classrooms and more flexible breakout spaces. Here's, you know, there's a quarter here, but there's a breakout space along that quarter, as well as a cluster of classrooms with an interior kind of breakout space that can be shared equally by those classrooms adjoining it. And you can see how it might operate, kind of like a school within a school, where there's, you know, there's boys and girls rooms, there's teachers rooms, there's small group rooms, as well as specialized rooms, science labs, all, you know, in this cluster, and this cluster's repeated four times in the building. So it breaks down that population into smaller groups, more personalized learning, more of what's happening today in education. Oh, there's an enlargement of it, so you can see it a little better there. And then another project of ours that's under construction, another high school in Stoughton, Mass, a very compact building, two and three stories, where the academic portion is to the top here, the sort of community portion to the bottom, the gym and auditorium, straddling a lobby, central commons area adjacent to the front entrance. And on the inside, that's what it looks like, these are renderings, so the building's not built yet, but the commons area has stairs connecting the multiple levels, has access to student cafeteria. It operates as the sort of the pre-function space for the auditorium as well and the gymnasium. They share all that, so it's kind of an efficient use of space. And then within those classroom clusters, there's a rendering of what breakout spaces could be. Flexible furniture, marker board walls that you can write on and project on, places to plug in for power and so forth, flexible furniture immediately adjacent to the classrooms and to teacher areas due for supervision. So in our proposal, when we were, you know, seeking this job at Wacona, we did identify these issues. We elaborated that more on tonight's, at tonight's building committee too, but some of the things that we think are issues to be addressed during this feasibility stage in design, obviously the big question of should the project be new construction or renovation and/or addition to the existing school? We need to integrate 21st century learning environments into the school, whether it's, you know, an addition renovation project or new. We have to deal with, you know, this is more of a sort of political reality, you might say too, dealing with declining enrollments. The projected enrollment that we're designing to is lower than today's current enrollment at the school. There are ways to, and strategies to deal with that, but it's sort of an issue that we just want to point out. And likewise, with a small school too, there's need, there's a need to be more creative with space, because space is at a premium. You can't have the luxuries that some larger schools might have in terms of all the different types of spaces and resources. But certainly there are very positive opportunities in a small school too, for better, you know, relationships between teachers and students and administration and so forth. And the issues, the sort of technical issues of dealing with construction adjacent to occupied, you know, schools, like we showed. We can handle it, and there are strategies and methodologies to do that. We just want to point out that it is something to be aware of, and when we start to evaluate options, that, you know, we need to keep that in mind too. And as was reinforced tonight too, that, you know, having the community be part of this process the whole way through is very important. And we can talk about that in a minute too, about how we can do that meaningful ways. We have put together some very preliminary thoughts about how we could approach this from a design point of view. These aren't meant to be solutions by any means, because we haven't done the educational planning yet, but just to show that there are ways to renovate the existing building, perhaps add some new space, down to save only the auditorium and gymnasium and add all new academic space on the existing site. To also, you know, ways to identify zones, building zones where new construction might happen adjacent to the existing building. And there's one of them that's kind of in front of the school here, which, you know, may have opportunities of, you know, proper configuration or positive orientation, but it also imposes some challenges as to how do you operate the school while you're building in front of it? You know, how do you get buses in, students in service, and so forth? So all of these areas have different issues that would need to be addressed. But again, these are just thoughts to show how we would approach things, but not meant to be solutions, because we really need to spend time first doing programming and educational planning. So these are three major steps that each have submissions to the state, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The first one is called Preliminary Design Program, which would happen this spring, includes assessing the existing conditions of the school, developing an educational program, and also identifying a full spectrum of alternatives. And we have a more specific-
Yeah, so if you look at your schedule that I gave you, lines two is MSBA PDP submittal. We're targeting May 7th for that. And then on May 21st would be the conclusion of the MSBA review of the PDP, which is line three.
At each step of the way, the MSBA does spend a good amount of time reviewing our submittals, up to three weeks there, and they do give us meaningful feedback and comments that we react to. They are partners in this process. They're going to be contributing, you know, say half the cost roughly, and so they do have both guidelines, regulations, and a process in place that we find actually very positive and productive in the end.
Can you give me an example of that?
Of which?
Of what they may suggest do, or what they suggest you, if that's what you found helpful.
Well, say at this stage, they may ask us, you know, in the existing conditions, is there something that we missed in investigating? Did we do subsurface investigation to look for, you know, water tables in the areas that we might be thinking of alternatives? Did we check with the utility companies to make sure there's sufficient gas in the street to service a new building of this size? You know, meaningful things like that. Yeah. The next submission is, once we've developed this series of alternatives, we want to evaluate them and narrow it down to one preferred option. That's where, you know, the real decision is as to, you know, is it new construction or renovation and so forth? We, so we would also refine and sort of finalize the education plan in case there's any tweaks that happen. We would develop criteria with the building committee to evaluate those alternatives and narrow it down, as I say, to a preferred option. And that's targeted for-
So we are hoping to make our submission on 9/10, and we're trying to target an MSBA board meeting for a vote, a formal vote, on Halloween, 10/31/2018.
This submission requires a vote of the board to get approval. So once we've identified the preferred option, we need to meet with the MSBA staff and then their board, and they approve that.
I think the schedule I handed out showed 9/12. The date is actually 9/10 for the submission.
And then the third phase is, once we have one option, we develop it in more detail so that we can put a good cost estimate to it and identify the full scope of the project, the proper budget, not just the construction budget, but the total project budget? And the schedule, the construction schedule, the design and construction schedule moving forward. And that date is June?
So, yeah, we're targeting the submission on February 8th, and we're trying to hit an MSBA board meeting for a vote on 4/10/2019. And then just to jump through some of the other schedulers, you have- So the next line is line 10, the community vote. Assuming we get approval on April 10th, and Carl communicated earlier that when you get to that point, it's pretty much a foregone conclusion. You've met with these people over a year, you've worked through difficulties, they've given you repeated comments. So hopefully at that point, the 4/10 vote is just a-
Formality.
Formality. So, you know, we're thinking that on February 8th, you're going to know what the cost is, and you know what the schedule is, and you really can start reaching out to the communities. Nevertheless, we'd like to, you know, target a community vote sometime in late April, May. We, by statute, we have 120 days from April 10th to gain approval of the project from the communities. You know, we'd like to do that sooner than later if possible. Then once we get MSBA approval, and we get approval from you folks to proceed with the project, then the project is going to be fully funded by the MSBA. These guys will go on to complete the design. There's two phases to that, design development and that construction documents. And we're estimating it'll take about a year to do that, and that will get you to a set of biddable drawings that we can put on the street to the contractor community. So we're targeting a construction start of May, June, 2020. If you look at the schedule, we've allocated three years for construction. That is conservative, but we have no idea what the option is right now. If we go into a phased renovation where we're doing, you know, a piece of the building every year over a period of years, it could be three years. If it was a completely new building, it could be 18 to 24 months. We just don't know, so I don't want to try to set expectations too high right now, so. So we're thinking by, you know, August of 2022, you have, your students will be able to move into a new village. Hopefully, we can pull that back, and, you know, perhaps it's 2021. So that's, you know, more or less the schedule. Any questions on the schedule for the Carl's?
When you start the, you've got several alternatives in place about May 21st, 2018, and then you have basically the summer to choose between those. You mentioned earlier about 12. I mean, there could be a lot of alternatives, and you're going to be setting criteria. I don't, I'm not sure when that gets set. But anyway, it looks like there's a lot of work during the summer. Is there a lot, are there a lot of meetings during the summer with the community or with the building committee?
There would be at least monthly meetings with the full building committee and bi-weekly meetings with the working group, and there'd be at least one additional community meeting at some point in that period. We would actually know prior to May, roughly a little bit earlier, you know, what the alternatives are, and we could start, you know, say we did want to try and catch families before summer vacation and have that community meeting in June. Those are some of the issues we would talk about in trying to set the schedules moving forward. But there definitely would want to be a community meeting sometime before we submit- But there definitely would want to be a community meeting sometime before we submit in, whatever, September 10th, I think.
That's probably July or August.
There is a lot of work here, right? But, you know, we also don't want to let this project, you know, go out too far because construction costs escalate every year. We want to contain that.
No, I'm planning my summer.
Okay. Well, more than I can talk about any meetings.
The other thing is that... When I was going through my mind, I'm looking at town meetings in May and June, but really, these are not town meetings. That vote would be a single day in that between April...
The town boards have it coordinated a single day.
Yeah, and it between April and May, so that works pretty well.
We wanted to communicate that now so you had over a year to plan that. You know, there's possibilities that these things would slip, and we would, if we don't hit that Halloween board meeting, I listed all the board meetings below. The next one's December, so, you know, you lose a month and a half, so we really don't want to do that if we, if we don't have to. But, you know, if things come up, you guys may want us to look at a different option or something. We need to be flexible as well.
I had a question. You said something about you allotted three years for construction.
Yes.
On this timeline, I might be reading it wrong. It looks like two. Summer of 2020 to summer of 2022?
20, 21, 22.
I mean, it's three calendar years, but it's two 12 years.
Yeah. Well, we're trying to hit, ideally, you move into the school, you know, in August. Yeah. So it may be a little short of the three, but good catch.
So in terms of next steps, we just touch on what would be upcoming activities. The first being these visioning sessions that we talked about to help develop the educational program. They'd be a couple of full-day sessions held here. We're working on the logistics right now and with a pretty broad-based group of attendees, 20 to 30, maybe even up to 40 people, working kind of in work sessions. There's sort of some of the time spent, like, in this sort of presentation mode, others in smaller groups, and reporting back to the full group, but that kind of a session. And as I say, wide-based audience of administrators, teachers, yourselves, school committee, PTO kind of people, students, community members, who may or may not have children in schools, just to get a good cross-section of folks to help develop the future of the building. So that's kind of high-level of planning. Then there's also more detailed level planning where we will meet with every individual department in the school and administrator and understand, you know, what their needs are, what their spaces are relatively soon, following on the heels of visioning. Because we do have to develop, a program is not just kind of the philosophical statement of what the school wants to be, but it's a listing of every space in the building. How many classrooms, how many offices, how big the auditorium is, how large the gym is, those sorts of details all go into that educational program ultimately. So we'll spend a fair amount of time doing that. That's why we have people and staff who specialize in that. And this is sort of the flow where we don't start designing anything until we have that educational plan in place. We establish those criteria as objectively as we can, try to take the emotion out of it, and create a short list of, we may start with 10 or 12 options and get it down to, say, three or four viable ones that we look at a little more closely, put a general magnitude or, you know, of cost on, and develop a short list that we can come up with that preferred option. And then the other kind of meetings are community outreach. So in addition to the visioning sessions, we would envision having general open invitation public meetings to share with the public what we've been doing, what the status is along with the building committee, what the status of the project is, but then also sort of break up into smaller groups to get feedback. And we find it's more successful to try and do that in smaller groups, people more willing to talk, and sometimes these groups are focused on specific topics. So we may have a group interested in education, another group interested in site planning, another group interested in athletics or music program spaces, those sorts of things. And we'll record, you know, the discussion that goes on. We'll try to elicit, you know, comments from all, and then come back together and share and use that to follow up the next time around. And we envision having these, because you are a region that's pretty large geographically, do it in at least three or four different locations, like you did previously for, you know, garnering support for the feasibility study vote. So again, these are meant not to sell the project at the end, but these are meant for meaningful input in a timely fashion. In other words, before decisions are finalized by the building committee, we have a community meeting at each of those. We mentioned there were those three submissions to the MSBA. That's a sort of a good pace. There should be at least three milestone community meetings times four geographic, so that it really comes out to 12 outreach meetings then for the district. So that's where we are. That's what we shared tonight with the building committee. And we got a lot of good input, too, where we went around the table and people told us their major issues and concerns for us moving forward. So we appreciate that, and we'll be back regularly, I'm sure. Thanks.
Any questions?
Is this, do we really open occupancy less than two weeks before school starts?
Generally, not, no. We generally like it to come right now. We'll be finishing the building, say, in June. We have a month to do furniture and computer data, building, flush out the building, and final cleaning, and then give the teachers time to move in well before the start of the school year, generally. So that's sort of generic in nature, that schedule right now.
You find, I noticed in a couple of the things you showed from previous schools that you had community spaces. And when you say community spaces, as far as the auditorium and the gym, was that geared just for that school or is it for the community as a whole? Do you take much of their input and say, you know, geez, they could really do with a walking track and try to use some of that to...
We do try to respond to the greatest extent possible. You've got to remember that these are school projects. The MSBA is pretty careful about only funding those portions that do relate to high school, but certainly, there are many things that relate to high school that can also be used by the community. And it's in everyone's interest, we think, to get the most out of these buildings. And if you do have a wonderful new, you know, auditorium theater, why not invite the community theater to use it when the students aren't using it? You know, the basketball leagues to use the gym when the students aren't using it, that sort of thing. That's what we meant by...
A couple of your, a couple of your other schools showed where it took the place of a football field. Now, does the MSBA replace that football field?
Yes.
If you take one of our softball fields away and they take, that's part of the whole project...
The whole project cost includes the fields, includes the demolition of the existing building if it were to, you know, result in that as well. But there are certain caps on how much they'll reimburse for some of those costs. Because it can vary so much from community to community, the MSBA's policy has been to sort of set a relatively low threshold and say, yes, well, those things are eligible for reimbursement, but only up to a certain extent. And some things are categorically not eligible, like football stadiums. I mean, you can build the field, but you can't build a stadium, you can't get reimbursed for a stadium.
It says in taxes.
Exactly. You can't build swimming pools, you can't do ice hockey rinks, even though the high school students may use them, and it's not, those aren't eligible for reimbursement.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that your free construction, everything will be accessible.
Everything. That would be certainly an advantage whichever way the project goes, is that the future building will be fully accessible.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just so you know, in the newsletter, it's totally electronically, it's on the website. It's primarily, you know, like, the principal and the... So you'll probably notice, and we'll get in full contact with parents, you'll probably notice that the principals in the other four buildings are pushing out newsletters and information as well, because really, we want to make sure that we're reaching all avenues, especially at the elementary. So that newsletter will get in your hands monthly, either through me or through the buildings or on the website, which is, we're looking for all avenues to get the word out about those projects.
Okay, so we'll turn to our agenda on curriculum subcommittee.
Yes, we're meeting this evening prior to the opening meeting, and we discussed the field trip of the robotics club. They're going to Wendover, Mass. on January 26th, staying overnight through 2/7. They're leaving Friday after school, and the reason they have to have an overnight is because the program starts at 7:30 in the morning, which would be a little bit difficult to get those people up at 5:30 to be in over on time. So this is going to be funded through a grant, so there's no fees involved, and the nurse has been notified, and she has said that the presence on the trip is not needed. We're going to send a note on that. So with that in mind, we're going to make a motion to approve field trip by the robotics club on January 26th, 27th, 2018, and that would be for a maximum of six students, and funding would not be initially.
Second. Yeah, we just need to read the motion, please.
Okay. Good. I don't have...
Oh, I didn't...
We'll take it.
Your resolve, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, approve an overnight field trip for the Wacona Robotics Club to Wendover, Mass. January 26th through 27th, 2018, as recommended by the curriculum subcommittee.
Second. Okay, the motion is second for approval of overnight field trip to Wacona Robotics Club in Wendover, Mass. is there any discussion? Travis?
Once again, we're getting this two weeks before it started, and...
So I think, what was it? It was Wednesday, Jeff Pike got the start time, and so he recognized that and very responsibly said to the parents, we're going to have to go early, and they said, is there any way? And so I said, given that, it was only Wednesday, they knew what their start time was, so we want them fresh for it. But Jeff was very apologetic and was hesitant to bring it forward, but I thought it was worth it, given how hard this group works.
And then they want a, they want a competition to be able to advance this.
To qualify.
To qualify for this, so it wasn't like something that they knew about back in September.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Is that it for curriculum? Barbara?
We don't have further...
Okay. All right, finance subcommittee?
I have nothing to report tonight. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday at 6 o'clock at the central office. We will pull agenda.
Okay. Policy? Mr. Ibarra is not here this evening, is anyone want to scan him first?
I think it was last week.
Personnel?
I have nothing to report, but it would be appropriate if we went into executive session to approve minutes, probably at the end of the meeting would be preferable. So...
How's...
We did that just before the meeting tonight. We reviewed the technology budget for 2018, purchasing the Chromebooks. Most classes now have a one-to-one devices to the students, still using some iPads for some, you know, appropriate applications. Discussed a new program that's being offered, started in England, and now it's being offered in 17 states in the United States, Girls Go Cyber Start. It's a cybersecurity competition to get girls involved in computers and IT, and it's a really, really cool program. Fortunately, it's not offered in Massachusetts. The educational general council of Massachusetts turned it down for some reason. And I'm going to be following up on that and contacting her to find out, you know, if they're going to be offering it in the future in the state.
I would not expect that from McConnell.
Yeah, we'll see. Anyway, it's a great program, but, you know, we can't do it right now. Our school is doing well, fully functional. Some slight issues with timely entry of data. The Wi-Fi and buses program is still alive. It was included in the bus contract recently to be able to install the equipment, and we're still looking for a proper bus route for any type of pilot program. Tech Sub has a new website, finally. We're caught up with everyone else, and it's accessible from the cbrsd.org homepage. And we did not set a date for the next meeting. We'll, I'll be setting one when appropriate topics come up. So, next...
Does anyone have any questions for technology? Okay, we've already covered the Wacona building project. We'll move to superintendent's reports and recommendations.
So, if we're able to, we might have a visual of the wonderful, a couple things. So just my school committee report, hopefully, you had a chance to read Mr. Matthews' very well-written letter, and it's very, I think it's very unique about Wacona, you know, 18, 19-year-old young man takes time out of his schedule to want to reach back out to the administrators and teachers at the high school that he attended, and not only thank them for being a supportive community, but specifically, he talks about some of the instruction he received and how it benefited him at the college level. For those of you who know Connor or knew Connor, this is certainly very in line with the kind of individual he is, and he contributed just as much to Wacona as I think we were able to contribute to him. But it really does, I think, looking at multiple sources of data is important. Quantitative data is important, but qualitative data is as well. And I think this is really from, from the mouths of students, what their experience was like. So I reached back out to him, said, do you mind if I shared this? And he actually wanted it to be shared. So really, really quite wonderful. Already today, and this could be applied to any of our five principals, but the team who is here from DRA commented that when, if you've ever watched the Halls of Wacona with Aaron Robb, he knows every kid's name, but every kid reaches out to say hello to him, which is pretty, some of us in high school can remember not necessarily going out of our way to say the morning to the principal. But it's a really great dynamic that he has set up as well as our other principals, so it was nice to hear DRA already acknowledged that. So Craneville, I just wanted to share, we were very fortunate. We have received several grants from Berkshire to Konic, but this was actually a grant for cross-country skiing. For those of you who are familiar with Craneville's PE teacher, as WY just shared with me several times, he was an Olympic hopeful at one point and brings a professional expertise to Nordic skiing. Carrie Mason, who talked to you last year, is super excited because this is now fulfilling one of their goals to have what she often calls a lifetime wellness activity. She wants one in each season, something you would actually do as an adult, as opposed to kind of things we leave behind in PE from K-12. Mr. Peters thought of the one we're all thinking of. Most of us don't engage in dodgeball, fortunately. You know, snowshoeing, Nordic skiing, so really kind of cool. The new scholarship opportunity at Wacona, and actually, I'll pull up a couple of things, and this will lead into the budget. This is Mr. Amencost really brought us involved in this by taking an opportunity for a meeting and taking a chance that this would come to fruition, and it's a scholarship opportunity, quite an extensive scholarship opportunity, comes with a high amount of fiscal resources for the student or students who are selected, but it also, it's a scholarship opportunity that's brought to Berkshire County from a former, she was the dean of Dickinson College at one point, president of Dickinson College in Pennsylvania, has worked in this program in Pennsylvania and in other parts of the country, and he's brought it here. It's for first-generation college students who are identified as under-matching, meaning they either... they either might not go to college, or they might say, "Ugh, I'm gonna start at B C C, I'm gonna go to M C L A, even though I was accepted to BU, even though I was accepted to Penn State, even though I was accepted to James Madison." And it gives them not only the financial support to push the envelope, but it gives them individual mentoring and coaching to be successful once they get there, given that it really might be pushing them out of their comfort zone, and I think what we were most impressed with is there's a very high graduation rate associated with the scholarship recipients, which we all know about concerns about college completion rates as opposed to college acceptance rates. So really kind of a great opportunity, it's us, Drury, and Monument that she's working with. So we were really excited that she is bringing this to Wacona. I talked a little bit about the Doctor for a Day program that hopefully you were...
Yeah, I was actually notified about this opportunity, I got Hawker's from North County, so he put that out to all of, well, to many of the, probably four or five districts that he thought would fit, so we, you know, took the opportunity, we met with her over the summer, I'm missing her name right now, but it was a good, it was a good discussion.
Yep, yeah, it was excellent, and then we actually encouraged Berkshire Hills too, so they, that would be thank you, thanking John Hawker. So, yeah, so it really is a great opportunity, and now she's involved directly with Aaron, Kathy Grady, getting involved with kids, and running some actually seminars for guidance counselors to make sure they have accurate information, because for certain students, depending on your economic situation, a college like BU may actually offer you a better package than a college you think is UMass, so she's got a really extensive background. Just an update on UDL, and one thing I might recommend, so we're really excited, I told you we're at the level now in our strategic plan that we're not just doing, you know, one-day professional development, two-day professional development, Dr. Craft Reese knows about this from the summer, part of our goal is a graduate course with Katie Novak, who is, you know, the guru of actually teaching with a UDL implementation in the classroom, not anymore about why or what, but how, and that's what teachers want. So we have 47, probably like 50 people who are gonna be in this graduate course, so talk about, talk about interest and excitement, and it meets after hours, on a Saturday, two evenings, lot of online components, so it's really increasing our capacity instructionally. And really, I think at this point, it's upwards of 90% of staff, almost all of staff at the two smaller elementary schools, the vast majority of our elementary staff, classroom teachers will be in the room. There's gonna be a second course this summer, and I think that might appeal more to our secondary teachers. We do have a decent representation at Wacona and Essecus, but it's almost, it's almost all of our classroom teachers at the elementary level, which is awesome. And then the full administrative team, a lot of us are auditing that, but we're also through a grant, taking a course on evidence-based practices. Is what we're doing supported in research? Is there well-founded research to support that this works? You know, kids are not here for us to experiment and try different things, but we need to be using evidence-based practices. So all 12 of us, the entire administrative team, are taking a graduate, graduate, an online course through Harvard's Continuing Education Program on using evidence-based practices. And if you looked at staff meeting agendas right now, what you might see, I'll give an example from Mary Kay McCluskey, I studied on one of her staff meetings this week. What Mary Kay was pushing the envelope with is that, as a staff, we do a really good job with the workshop model, we're good with our mini lessons, our short instruction, we're good with our conferencing, we're good with our strategy groups. We need to now push the envelope with having students set goals. Now, Mary Kay was talking, all students, starting with pre-K to 5, they need to set goals, and they need to be able to work towards those goals. Mary Kay didn't say, "'Cause I think that's a good idea', she didn't say, "'Cause Leslie and I think it's a good idea'", she had research to support that, that the teachers had looked at and were able to see to support that it's a decision well-founded and evidence-based. So we're trying to lead that way, so that then we'll see it translated into classrooms. And then just on a side note, if you're kind of trying to wrap your head around this UDL, Katie Novak just came out with a book, and it's geared towards parents, and I started actually reading it, it was funny, I was reading it last night, and I said, "Oh, I'm a parent now too." It's like really cool, I was like, "Oh my God, that's a really good feeling." I was like, I was kind of reading it to get the perspective for parents, and I'm like, "Oh wow!", so it's really great, but it's really, it is very good, and it's not necessarily just that it's written at a level that you wouldn't necessarily be planning to do it in the classroom, but you really want to understand how to support it. So I have copies of it, and if you're interested, it's an easy read, and it's a very, it's very, very useful, very informative about what you're seeing in classrooms and why, whether it's as a school committee member, or as a parent, or both. So if you'd like to borrow a copy, just let me know, and if you'd like to borrow this one tonight, you're more than welcome to. So just a couple of follow-ups to the MCAS data that we went over last time, and it leads into the budget, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing, and then we'll get into... We will not go into great accounts, we do not know that fast enough. So the, just a couple of things, I did at the 11th hour, which I got a really quick plans, a chance to glance at, I got Leslie did too, we just got the report literally this afternoon at 4 o'clock, from the comprehensive programmer view. Glanced at the recommendations very quickly, and I felt very relieved to see most of them are in line with the goals we put forth in the budget and what we're doing, and a lot of the commendations are things we said, "Okay, good", because we feel good about staying the course there. Again, all data is important, and I think that comprehensive program review includes some really good qualitative data, some really good quantitative data, lots of observational data. So really just kind of, this is Leslie's, and I think you'll see this in where we're trying to go, and when you're kind of saying, "What are you, what are you doing to address the data?", and again, the data, we don't, we certainly want to address the statewide standardized testing data, but we want it to be part of the data, our story, and have multiple triangulations that are supporting this need. And really, what we're gonna talk about when we get into the budget presentation in a minute is just that we're really trying to make sure we have a solid tiered instructional model, we're not neglecting tiers, and we're not forgetting, while co-teaching as a special ed teacher at heart is extremely important, and Tier 3 often gets us really kind of amped up, and we really need to do something now, Tier 1 is where all our learners live, some of them only live there, and most of them do. So we really need a strong Tier 1, Tier 1 instructional system, and really, what that is, is that's our classroom teachers, but they can't do it alone, so if we said, "Okay, Tier 1's our classroom teachers", how are we coaching them? How are we supporting them? Do we have the supports they need to be in the classroom, being as effective as they can? Because nothing has a bigger influence than Tier 1. Tier 2 is usually students who primarily live in Tier 1, need to get back into Tier 1, but are having difficulties in one or two areas and working below grade level, and need to be pushed back to Tier 1. It's about supporting Tier 1, getting them back to Tier 1. And really, we have a good Tier 2 model, we don't have an equitable one right now, and I think this budget evens it out. Do we have enough of our Title 1 tutor supports to really be supporting Tier 1 in all the areas we need them? And then really, when you're getting into Tier 3, that's a smaller population of students, and it really is the more intensive model that's not necessarily supporting what's been done, but sometimes doing something slightly different to get them to what's being done. But we need to make sure it's kind of, it's balanced correctly in this, in this way, because these are the percentages. And again, Leslie, being a leader amongst the administrative team in evidence-based practices, all of this is based in evidence that she supports her work with. So it's just kind of an interesting thing to look at. Again, there's a link to the common assessment system that we're using, if you have a chance to take a look at that, study island, grades 3 through 8, parts of 9 and 10, really avoid going in blind, that we really know what we're looking at as far as data, and we're targeting our instruction all along, as opposed to really, really teaching, hoping we're cleaning the right car, waiting for assessment results to see if we cleaned the right car. We're looking at this on an ongoing basis. Couple of the other ones, again, we need to balance teaching to the test and not going too far down that path with preparing kids for their realities, and making sure they have skills, and test-taking is a skill, and there are some units, especially in third grade, we really had some feelings, and I think some feelings based in quantitative and qualitative data, our third graders had some real skills that didn't show up in testing, and what we kind of said is, is your teaching visible? Not, "Did you teach?", we know people are teaching, they're really working hard, but your teaching's really visible here. Your teaching wasn't visible in these results, why? And we saw some gaps in skills to access, the way students are being asked to show their knowledge, especially at third grade. So some of those things that we're doing. If you want to have a better understanding of the workshop model, because we saw, we talked about workshop model, workshop model, what is it, why? There's a link here that really gets into the basics of it, as well as the research behind it, because that's the model that we're really working to implement, K-8 right now. So those kinds of things, and if you really want some reading, and you really want to get into some of the reading, there is a link to the Curriculum Quarterly, which is a creation of Leslie, and it is the best professional development that you could ever get without leaving your couch, because it literally has, not only does it have research, it has all of the assessment schedules, it has the curriculum that we're following, it has suggestions, tips, all kinds of things, and it's really a collection of information that is geared towards our teachers and what they need. So if you look at that, it's, Leslie puts it out quarterly, but she updates it more often, and it's on our website, and it's a huge tool for our teachers. As a parent, you can probably learn so much as well by looking at, it gets into the standards based report cards, everything. So I just wanted to kind of go into that, because I think it's part of why we have the goals we do in the budget, just if that makes sense. Can I pull the budget up right here?
Before you go into that, I have a couple.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. I'll breathe.
Yeah, I'll let you breathe. Could you, I can't tell whether you've got the percentages on the screen or not, but if you do, could you tell me what they are?
Yes, so 80 to 90% of students, now again, just remember, 97-plus, ideally 100 students, 100% of students live here, but they may also access here. All students at points need to be accessing here, and hopefully, these are students who never leave here. 80 to 90% of students get all of their instruction in Tier 1.
Okay.
And then this one is 5 to 10% of our population, and this is a number that ebbs and flows, because unlike special ed, there's not clear entry and exit criteria, you have to become eligible, now you have to become not eligible, you really can go in and out of that as you need, it's a nice model, and this is 1.5% typically.
And these percentages are for Central Berkshire, this is what you...
This would be at overall, at a state level, this is typically what you'd find, yep, and they can go up and down. Now, this might mean that I spend most of my time here, but I do access, for example, reading instruction that is not based on the general-like curriculum. An example of it would be like a Wilson reading system, where we're teaching a fifth grader phonics, that's not part of the fifth grade curriculum. In Tier 2, you wouldn't teach something that's not part of the grade level curriculum, you would really be trying to support access back to it. This is special education.
Second area, have you talked about the storage shed on Craneville property? I hope that...
Different area, yes, wait, what, this is the skiing, yes.
If you look at availability inside the school, because there should be room, number one, and number two is, no, that's not our property, and I would ask that if you do want to continue with a storage shed, that that comes up for a vote before the school committee, that's the type of thing that a school committee would agree to, because that's, this is leased property, it's another building.
Let me ask you, let me get back to you on that, as to what the rationale is to why we can't fit it into the building, so I think Tom said that, but I don't know, and if there is an absolute need to do that, we can bring it back to you before they take any action.
Yeah, and if, I mean, if we've got $3,000, if some protection or something is required for the main building, that might be a preferable way to go instead of a shed.
Yeah, let me, I don't, honestly, I don't know the details around why, but I can look into it, and if they are gonna go that way, we can just bring it back to you on 26th. Sure.
Concerning the skiing thing, didn't we get a grant, maybe before your time of it, Berkshire Trails, do we still have those skis and stuff too, or?
So, snowshoes.
Those snowshoes.
Snowshoes, yes.
And there is a building outside of Craneville, I've never seen anybody in it, so I don't know if that, I don't, honestly, I've never seen it accessed by anybody, but...
A little small?
No, it's, it's pretty good size, I think, out back next to the basketball courts. I don't, I can't, I know there's one there, but...
Let me look, I honestly don't, the shed question I wasn't expecting, so I will definitely get the information, but definitely will know the answer. I'll bring that back to you.
I have a question about, and when you were talking in Tier 2, you mentioned equity, could you explain that?
And we're gonna get into that in the budget, absolutely. So it's really, our Tier 2 model, a lot of it has been based on our Title 1 tutors, and we do not equitably have them distributed throughout the district. Part of it has been funding, part of it has been piloting and seeing how successful it was, so in this budget, we are recommending that we even it out by adding in certain areas, and then moving specialist positions to the larger school where they can be more, used more flexibly, as opposed to kind of clustered in the smaller schools.
Okay.
So, yeah, exactly, and that, that came up in our comprehensive program review, just kind of, there's some really awesome things, and you've mentioned this, happening, how do we spread them and make them more consistent, and some of it's resource-driven. Is that, that's not the budget. Where'd you go?
We left.
Yeah, so I will mention, and I'm not gonna, don't worry, the, Leslie and I are gonna fully digest that report, but, and we'll share it in detail, most likely at the next meeting, but they do, we're really nice to, just very quickly saying, here are your commendations, here are areas that you need to focus on, and here are recommendations, and I was able to quickly pull a couple things and see alignment, which was very good, to our proposal, so I feel confident with where we're going. I think Leslie was a commendation. Leslie, so Leslie's in this budget, so Central Berkshire Regional School District, so Melissa and I were talking here earlier today, and I think we agree, and I feel that the administrative team stands with us when we say that we are very fortunate, because I've seen several of my colleagues around the state already coming out saying things like, "I'm bringing this budget forward, but I have reservations, I'm bringing this budget forward, but I am concerned because of what I'm needed to do here." That is not where we are, and it's really something that I am extremely excited about, and I'm extremely grateful to be in this situation, working here at a time where we are able to bring forth budgets that are really providing to the students what we feel is needed to move ourselves forward, and that we feel not only enthusiastic about the budget we bring forth, but we feel confident in it, and I think that as you see, those of you on Twitter, following budget presentations around the state, unfortunately, that's not always the case, and we are very grateful to you and to the towns that that is our situation. I think we make good decisions, and I think that we look at things carefully, and I think we're efficient, but we're also fortunate to really be able to think about what our students need and put it into the numbers. So what we're gonna do tonight is really go over an overview, make sure you understand the objectives. We have tried to make sure as well that they tie into the strategic plan, because that was a lot of, a lot of time and effort, especially in the first two areas that we talked to around our goals with teaching and learning, with staff development, and school improvement plans, which also tie, tie in there. We'll talk about any staffing revisions, where we've made changes, and how those, those have been done. I can say, we are very fortunate that any staffing revisions are about capacity staff have had, to not need to fill positions where retirements have come up, none of them actually changed the student experience, the course offerings, the class sizes, which is a very good thing. Projected increases and decreases within the FY19 budget, budget details we'll go through as we always do, comparison to FY18, anticipated revenue, anticipated expenditures, preliminary enrollment, operating expenditures, capital assessments. I'll do most of the beginning part, Melissa will take over, and if there is anything I can clarify, I will, and we will go through there. As I think you all, you all know, I'm telling people who have been doing this for quite some time or are familiar with budgets, we come forward early with the budget due to the timelines, but there are some things that will become more firm numbers as we go forward, and as a result, there could be and will be changes before the final budget is pre-adopted. So I just tried to really kind of think about what this budget is about, and I did change some language. We have said for two years now that it continues the work we're doing, and I don't necessarily think right now it's about that we're continuing to add, or we're continuing to take a step forward. We have a solid foundation, we need to enhance it in certain areas... We have a solid foundation, we need to enhance it in certain areas based on data. And we need to even it out in certain areas. So I think this budget really enhances some of the areas you've supported. You've supported inclusive education, you've built us a foundation where we have, we have, we have tier three. We have tier two, we have tier one. Do we have it at the level we need it, or are we at the level that we need to be? And I'll identify coaching, we need to step up a level with coaching now. And do we have it equitably? And I'll identify Title I tutors. But we do have it. Curriculum alignment you've worked with us on, and certainly, certainly digital learning, we have, have made bigger gains than I ever thought we would so quickly in the time I've been here. So what this, this does, where is it enhancing? It's enhancing our tiered model, and I saw that spoken to in the comprehensive program review from the state. It's enhancing our educational equity that was spoken to. And it's enhancing our reverse instructional model. They spoke to that pretty specifically in two areas I'm proposing we add. And that's finishing the alignment of curriculum in science and in math, specifically at the middle school. Where we have not had that in place to date. We have had it at the elementary, thanks to the support we've given, the science kits and Envision's math. So I'll talk to that. And stop me if there's, you know, any questions and anything like that. So the enhancements, and I say enhancements because it's not brand new, we have this, this is what we're doing, but we really need it to be more focused. I am recommending strongly the addition of a K eight instructional coach. That will really enhance our tier one. Leslie has laid the foundation for coaching. I think we're unique in that we have someone with a skill set to coach as well as to train coaches. I also think we're unique in that Leslie is being embraced and encouraged to come into classrooms and welcomed into classrooms. So we know the model works, we know our teachers want it, she started piloting it at Beckett, she's moved it into the other buildings. Kathy Buckley and Mary Kay McCloskey are also excellent coaches and are embedding it into their buildings. It's really about supporting the classroom instruction. We also have a healthy Title I grant, and our Title I grant is about tier interventions and making sure we have these pieces. So that's really something I feel passionately about. I think it's part of our, our story and it's part of what will assist us as we move forward. It's also very UDL. UDL is not about change it, make it different, it's about do what you're doing as well as you can for all learners. The addition of Title I tutors will give us Title I tutors in all of our buildings, K eight. And will give us a Title I tutor per grade level at the middle school. Which I think will be a much more focused model for us. This is really, this has happened, you know, due to your support, due to the hard work of Rick White and Joe Sturgis. The principals openness to this, teachers embracing it, are really looking at where our, our needs are and what we have. In this budget, we will have a Chromebook in the hands of every student in grades three through 10. We are confident that that will be a solid model. Our current students right now are sitting with Chromebooks in grades three through eight. So the students next year who will be in grades four through nine will be used to having that model. Where they have access to their own Chromebook that they're using throughout their day. It will be new to, obviously, our second graders going to third, and then we will add it to 10th. Ninth and 10th tend to have crossover in classes. So when we started talking with Aaron Robb, he said, I love, I love that ninth graders are coming with them. But ninth and 10th are really intermingling a lot. And what we do with ninth graders in our classes is very common with 10th, is there a way? I like having 11th and 12th having it be that some bring their own devices, some use the laptops because they're taking higher level math, and let's see how it goes. But I really think if we're going to do this well, it makes sense for 10, I agree with him, and this budget's allowed us to do that.
So this is, we have a pilot for this right now in Beckett, Washington, is that correct?
No, so right now, actually, partially, actually. So right now, we have this in place for every, every student in grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The uniqueness about Beckett, Washington is in fifth grade, they take them home.
So these are not being taken home?
The ninth and 10th graders, Aaron Robb does want to move towards them taking home. He's been reaching out to other high schools that have one-to-one models. The vast, vast majority of them do take them home because they don't collect them at the end of the day and cut into their schedules that way. So he does want to get the students there. Patty Robie in fifth grade at Beckett, Washington has piloted it to kind of work out not only with kids, but also with parents. You know, what kind of logistical issues might we have, what kind of access, and it's gone very, very well. So I think Aaron's confident that he can, he can make it go well at ninth and 10th. Wacona has the, the climate for it as far as, I don't want to use the term behavior management, that's an insult to Wacona. But the climate as far as how Stephen, expectations that Steve and Aaron set. So I think that you will see a recommendation that the ninth and 10th grade Chromebooks go home. Whether that happens right away or over time, but that would be the goal. We don't have that push right now at the other grade levels. Right now, I would say, right now, and everything's a moment in time, I could walk into my office tomorrow and get an email from somebody that they need something, that happens. But right now, our technology needs are met. What I mean by that is our interactive whiteboards, our projectors, all of the technology that we have in classrooms. We've been able to add technology into classrooms through our grants. Rather than saying, for example, we had a situation this year, which is what you want at Beckett, Washington, of the first and second grade teacher having trouble sharing the Chromebook. That's what you want. They're so ingrained in their use that they really were running into conflicts. We don't need to say to them, that's great, I understand you need that, we'll put it on the, the list for the budget. And you asked in October, you might get it next October. We've had funding through our grants that we were able to accommodate that request now. So K through two, access to technology is where the principals are requesting it to be right now. And 11, 12, K through 12, we have the technology needs met, although they're in different ways. K two for developmental reasons. 11, 12, we're still looking at that population, but they have an immense amount of access. So all the Chromebook carts that currently live at Wacona will now serve a smaller population. If that makes sense. I will say, because I always worry about this, technology use at the middle school is at an all-time high. Meaningful use is at the highest I've ever seen it, meaning what kids are doing is not something they could do with a pencil. I was in a language class with Lyndsey Russell in grade seven, but it was an eighth grade class because of what they were doing, it was actually seventh. And they were showing how they were moving from being a level one Spanish speaker to a level two by creating Google slides and embedding evidence of what they have done to show they have the different skills. So one student was recording himself speaking, the way that you need to be able to say certain things to get from level one to level two. He's making a recording of it, embedding the link and adding it in, saving things from, that they had done in the fall and embedding it because they have all their work accessible now. So very happy with the implementation. Aligned math curriculum, K eight, comprehensive review, we'll be happy to see that. As curriculum has met with Leslie, we're really looking at two different programs right now. We've budgeted to add an aligned curriculum, six, eight. We'll decide on the final one very shortly. But we're looking at data from two different pilots. And not just, not just really data to include feedback from the teachers, the students, parents, et cetera, as well as quantitative. Same thing in science. This is really just in an area that we've had gap. We have not, we've not, we've not gotten there. This is something we're almost waiting. When the 2016 standards came out, it took people who produce curriculum materials a little while to catch up and create the materials aligned to the standards. And now we do have a very strong pilot going. Sean Therian and Leslie are going to recommend that we adopt that most likely. And that's the one that we'll go with, and now we'll have a aligned curriculum to the standards in science, K eight. Does that make sense?
Lori, a quick question about the Chromebooks. Do we know any other high schools or middle schools in Berkshire County where every kid has a access to a Chromebook that they can take home?
In Berkshire County, I do not know. I know several because we've been going on the site visits to different high schools, and almost all of them have. Had the, either they already had them, they brought them to their new facility, or they've had them. I don't know, but I can certainly give that information to you. I bet Aaron knows off the top of his head.
I think we're just so close that we should just be looking at what's the cost to just make it happen?
11 and 12. I wouldn't recommend it, K two. It might not even be, and here's the other piece of it, if you really want to look at that, that we could. And Rick and I will be playing, playing a numbers game next week. We have carts, so we may be there. So what we've got to do is say, okay, all these ninth and 10th graders no longer need the carts. We were, if we, if this goes forward, Aaron will now know. All right, you've got, you still get all your carts, but 240 new Chromebooks are coming into Wacona. So your ninth and 10th grades don't need to touch them. If you broke those carts up and handed them out, how many Chromebooks short are you? It might not be, let me get that number for the next meeting. How many Chromebooks short would we be if we broke them up? It might be a very small number, because that's what, that's how we were able to get this close here. So we're closer than we realized last year. So, can you remind me? So we'll get that. Because it's not, it's, we might have the option. So this just, the staffing revisions just shows you where, again, adding a Title I tutor at the elementary. The middle school, after everything is said and done, for lack of better terms, I think we need to have a conversation about the middle school, just because we've been having one regularly. Middle school was scheduled for 500-plus students. In the time I've been here, we've taken steps towards scheduling it for the population it has. You've seen several steps. First year that I believe I was in this role, we talked about sixth grade. Then last year, we talked about we didn't need one of the teams anymore, and we went down by a team, a team of general ed teachers. What that did is that left gaps in teachers' schedules who teach what we call our explorers. Our explorers of classes that kids rotate through. Engineering, art, music, those kinds of classes. Less classes, less individual classrooms, homerooms, means less classes going through them. Those teachers had capacity. We knew that would be part of this year's budget and this year's story. Fortunately, what ended up happening is we had a retirement in one of the explorers. And that didn't need to be replaced because we have capacity in the teaching staff that we currently have. So now our explorer teachers will be fully scheduled. Pete's been creative in how he's used them this year, but really we need them teaching full-time. And this will, this will even that out, and the middle school will now be scheduled for the near future or for the future, as long as enrollment stays what it is right now in our current elementary. It'll be scheduled appropriately. So there's no change for the students. They still have the explorer, they still have the course. But we don't need the capacity anymore in the, the retirement. This was a retirement last year. And what happened was because of this explorer situation where people had gaps, we didn't end up filling the retirement because people had time in their schedule to do that. It ended up working out quite nicely. And I think what's happening is our library's become a much more progressive space. If anybody follows it on Twitter, you might have seen the drone that they now have, the Maker Space. Can look around this library, and it's a much different kind of learning space. And kids are actively engaged in hands-on types of activity. It also has a leveled library, so it's not just kind of go in and you, you look for something with the, the decimal system that's been in place for, for hundreds of years. It actually has leveled libraries to support our instructional model. So there's not a gap in our library, we're filling it with the capacity of teaching staff. Which is pretty consistent with how we're staffing our libraries in other areas. The only full-time librarian we have is at Wacona. She does not function as a full-time librarian. Teaches VHS, she teaches other courses, she's doing a lot of different things. This was the last traditional role we had. And we're trying to move it into a more progressive 21st century setting, and it's working quite well. So we do want to fill that with the capacity of the teaching staff we have. Title I tutor, we're going to add to the middle school to get the equity. This is the same story. We had a retirement in a point-five position that we're not needing to fill because we had a point-five gap in a specialist schedule at the middle school. Same situation, but it is a reduction. That is our only reduction in force that I'm, that is our reality. We just, we don't have the kids to put in front of the person. We had capacity in another teacher's schedule who was not scheduled, and we have a point-four person coming in to teach two courses. Schedule the person you have is, I think, what we need to do. Kids won't feel an impact there, it's just a matter of staff being fully scheduled. District Y, you know about the coach. This is a reduction, it is, due to student needs, but we have to remember, it's January. This reduction would happen if nobody leaves. Paraprofessionals have no incentive to tell us if they're retiring. They also probably wouldn't even if they had the incentive in January. This means we're one too many. So it's not likely to actually be an employment implication. This always happens, or very commonly, most likely, it's going to happen in special education, student services because those needs change all the time, the population shifts as it should. So we've got some changes that happened, but we're adjusting them in the budget. Over the course of the year, things have happened, and now we're reflecting them correctly in 2019's budget. We had talked to you about a B C D A position, it's where we wanted to be. It's one of the hardest positions to, to find anywhere in the state. It is borderline impossible in Berkshire County, we have not been successful with it. Fortunately though, these are services we're required to provide by law. We have been able to reestablish a relationship with a contracted service provider. Things are going well for the families, the kids are getting their services. And right now, we need to continue with that because we can't, it's not like other positions that we can say, we're trying to find someone. We're legally required to have those services right away. So we're switching that into contracted services at this point. Elementary, last, last year there was a, or earlier, there was a move due to needs. We had a population shift at the middle and the elementary where there was a special education need at the elementary. So that teacher is at the elementary level as opposed to the middle. We went into last year with this unfilled, the need did not present. We don't have the student need for the paraprofessional, so we won't fill it this year. That's the same thing, that was just a, we, we now, Nescus has three special ed teachers and Craneville has four. The needs are higher right now at Craneville. And then this position, really, we had a student, this was not filled. So we had staff member leave, we had a student placed out of district, and then we had several students access that transition program. So the position was not needed, those students are now well-established in the placements they're in, and Wacona is well-staffed. So they're not people who are here right now. If that makes sense? But they are, importantly, we cleaned them up correctly. And Melissa's going to take it, most part.
Honestly, interesting. So there are increases in the budget. As usual, there's salary increases in all of our union, our units, there's contractual increases. We're able to offset that with use of grant funding in, in some cases, so we're able to minimize or at least reduce the increases that we'll see. Benefits, again, big increase in the budget. I'm projecting 13.5% increase. We don't set the rates until January 29th. That could very well be smaller. I'm hoping it's smaller, this is conservative at this stage of the game because it's an unknown. And I'd rather have it a little higher than it, it should be or needs to be at this point. And the budget instructions ask that we fund the OPEP trust with 250,000. Last year, we did 150,000, so that's an increase of 100,000.
Well, yeah, good job.
Operational increases, we signed a new transportation contract last year. So we are seeing an increase in our buses, 2.5% each year. That is shown in this initial budget, student services. We do have some increases there. Potential placements out of district tuition increases. Contracted services and transportation is part of the, the contract that we signed, so they'll see an increase in that as well. We'll keep an eye on the, the needs of student services, special education needs. And this will adjust as we move forward in the process because we'll have more knowledge as we go forward. We do have some decreases, utilities, you'll remember that we signed a solar contract. We anticipate that we will see some, some of the benefits of signing that contract in fiscal year 19. So we'll see a decrease in electricity costs. And we signed a national, natural gas contract for heat in some of our buildings, and we'll see a cost, a decrease there for some of our buildings. So we're anticipating a decrease of almost 35,000 in that area. Unemployment obligation was set at, in 2018 at 75,000. I've, we've reduced that to 10,000 because the need is just not there, we don't need to fund it that high. We don't have that many reductions. Technology hardware. Technology hardware, we talked about using grant money to fill requests that come in during the year. So with being able to do that, we are able to reduce the budgetary number for technology. So we've reduced that by $26,000. The appropriation request for Berkshire County retirement actually came in lower than it has in past years. So we see a decrease there of almost $30,000. So that brings, stay there. That brings the initial budget amount that you see in your booklets to $27,539,15. Fiscal year 18 was $27,96,443. That is technically a 1.64% increase. But you'll notice that your budgets have a 2.28% increase. That's because we are using a different avenue for transportation revenue. So it enabled us to take away expenditures and sort of give almost a lower increase than it really is. It's 2.28% if we leave those expenditures in there. And that would be comparing apples to apples. For revenue, very conservative, again. We don't, the governor has until the fourth Wednesday of January to release his budget. So that is January 24th, or the third Wednesday, 4th. And until we get those numbers, we've got to be conservative. These numbers will change. Chapter 70, right now is held level. Chapter 71, which is the transportation reimbursement, that's held level. Charter school level from last year. We're utilizing $450,000 from the transportation revolving fund. You voted at the end of last year to move those funds over, so we're using that to offset transportation assessments. And the E and D appropriation is at $1,110,000. Last year, it was $1 million. The budget guidelines request that if it's over $1 million, to leave $250,000 in the account and use the rest to offset assessments. All other revenue has been held level. So this is, this is it, just in a chart format where you can see that these are held level. We've got the addition of $450,000, which is an increase year-over-year of 228. Reduction in revenue and expenses in the transportation because of the 450, and the E and D increase of 111. These are the function areas that we report to the state. So within these are salaries, supplies. Every item in the budget that falls under each one of these is in there, it's not separated by benefits or salaries. So school committee is seeing a little bit of an increase, $7,500. That is because the budget instructions ask that we include $10,000 for unanticipated NSBA expenses. That's where that is. Superintendent line is up a bit, but that's because we're using 10% of grant money to offset the superintendent's salary. We were using 22%. So you see an increase there.
And there's an audit in there as well, right?
There's a student activity audit included in there as well. Business and finance, we have new copier lease contracts due. The state contract has changed, not for the better of the district, so we'll see some increases there. Technology, again, is the reduction of hardware.
Which was grant-funded throughout the year.
Yep. District-wide, that includes transportation expenses, so that's why you see a big decrease there. That's the revolving money versus the expenditures and contingency. And these are all fairly level. These three here, elementary, middle, and high, that's with all the movement of staff from one level to another, one school to another. That'll move all of these around because their salaries go with them and all are at different levels. And then again, special ed had an increase. This reduction here, the $40,000, is due to the retirement that we saw this year at Nescares. And it's not a full salary because we're offsetting it with the capacity of remaining teachers. So you do see some salary in that line. The only other ones in here that really jump out are, of course, the benefits. And that, again, is, could be reduced, yet to be seen. The vote will be on January 29th, and we'll know more then.
Well, what is medical health?
Medical health is the nursing department, and there is an increase there. We're anticipating some loss of grant funding. This is the graph that Rich Peters loves.
The whole goal. I find it so. That's why we have this. Yes, our whole goal.
This is my goal. That's where we're spending our money, benefits and health insurance, and salaries and employees. So you see it from the numbers, but this shows it to you very visually, that it's in salaries and benefits. That's the bulk of our budget.
Well, it'd be even more dramatic if we defined elementary, middle, and high school, which is really what the bulk of it is, which would be, you know, greater than the benefits, and it would illustrate how useless it is trying to save money by cutting paper. And then, well, that's another way we could do it. I mean, the difference between those three elements isn't that significant. You guys move. We are moving staff. Between those doesn't make any difference. What's important is our funds are going to people.
Yeah, I can, I can work on that for the tentative, so we can see it that way there, Besides the operating, we also have other revenue sources, which are deemed special revenue sources. And really, they're grant money, both federal and state. They're private grants such as the skis at Craneville. And also other revenue sources such as school choice, Circuit Breaker, which is a special education reimbursement fund. Athletics and student activities, food services, and this is the total for this grouping here, the total for the grants. So between the revolving and the grants, there's an additional 1.9, almost 1.2 million that we use to help run the district.
And another thing Melissa had pointed out, because we were looking at today, is the school choice number is not necessarily a student reflection, but some of our students who are choicing out are not choicing out at the bottom cost. They're choicing out at a high level of cost due to their needs. So school choice cost is not always apples to apples. Because when I looked at numbers and then at revenue, I was, you know, kind of, doesn't make sense. But when she had explained that the bills don't all come in at the same number, and that's part of our story right now.
Right. School choice is not just $5,000 per student. There's increments added for services needed on top of that five if any are. So you could have one student at $5,000, one at $20,000, one at $15,000. These are the preliminary enrollment figures. And you can see that we've had a couple of increases. Beckett's went from 133 to 138, Dalton made 25, date 23, 833. And so the percentages have moved a little bit. They're all in the same ballpark they've been in for the last few years. But Beckett's went up a bit, and Dalton's went up a bit, and the others have gone down just slightly because it is based upon the five-year rolling average of students. We're not going to show any assessments at this time because we just don't have the information to do so. We don't have the governor's budget. That's where the net minimum contributions for each town comes out. That's where the revenue figures come. And the revenue figures could be higher than what we have budgeted, could be lower, and that would affect the assessments. So we're not, we're going to not guess at them this, at this stage of the game. We'll wait till we have more information. And then the capital budget, still, we're seeing a decrease of $56,000 in fiscal year 19. And we are, part of that is because we're paying interest-only on the feasibility at this point, doesn't increase it much. And all the other projects, the principal and interests are going down as we move forward in the life of these bonds. And it will be available online tomorrow morning, if you'd like to read it over coffee.
And you can read this, or this, which one do you choose? I'll take a bow, who's with me?
Thank you very much.
Any questions for the administration about the budget?
I just want to make one comment that I think we've said this every year now for the past five years, so this budget, this book that we get, has improved every year.
Every year.
I'm here today, and I've noticed some more categories, I can hear more information, that it's just, you're doing a great job of that. All right, so the next order of business is personnel, superintendents. Has no personnel changes to note. We have either, we have either old or new business to discuss unless a member wants to bring anything up. We'll move on to remarks for the committee, and we do plan to go over this executive session minutes tonight. We'll go into executive session for that, and then we'll adjourn from executive session. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a remark, and that is that I was going to go attend the December 14 meeting, but I did read the minutes, and I was informed of the Warrior Rear, which I accessed online, and I wanted to congratulate the accounting classes for their effort, the mugs and some posters. Again, we had the war room in front of it, and I wanted to just say that Mr. Pike was very diligent in collecting the payment before he released the books. So who knows, the accounting class.
Okay, anyone else for remarks for the committee? All right. Your motion to go into executive session?
Be it resolved that Central Park, your regional school committee, go into executive session at 8:45 PM in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, to accept minutes of previous executive sessions, which the chair has declared an executive session is necessary, and to not reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Second.
Here's your motion in a second to go into executive session. This for town will read during, so we will call those, either I or they. We're going into executive session or abstain.
Dr. Crafters?
Aye.
Misty Tomaso?
Aye.
Mr. Gazilla?
Aye.
Mr. Hawker?
Yes.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Ledizori?
Aye.
Mr. Les?
Yep.
Mr. Peters?
Yep.
Mrs. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Amacost?
Aye.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.